Steel, we want interior. Cause those are past the exterior doors.
We haven't forgotten those.
This feels really good, I mean I'm good. I forget, I'm supposed to. My grip on that.
Actually, we worked websites and they had a manufacturer who bought our home services.
And if you do anything with the windows, you can find the same thing here.
Actually, the exterior wall for two by six.
Really?
The exterior wall for two by six.
See, that's what we have problems with the windows on, everything's uh.
So, I was gonna draw uh. Stock windows at the dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Uh mail, and then I'll just re- re- putting the windows that I thought. It's like a whole bunch of windows, and they're good, good windows.
Oh yeah.
That I'm done with.
Yeah.
And so, that um.
So, I'm trying to think, I told you. No, make it rethink. I think that uh. We had reused one more, we really had a brick. So we had a. We were tearing it down until it was good. But I think that everything else, we went in there, we threw everything down on the interior walls. And resold them because there was no closets. There was no nothing, so. I think when we did that, then we had more able to use normal floors to put back in.
There's a jam. Like that wish. The whole supply stuff, or something.
And I told you earlier, the little um interior doors.
Oh really?
Uh which is builders discount center.
Okay, so, hi Alan. We'll go in, uh, go back into session. Motion for uh sheriff. Do what?
Christie said we might want to talk to her, we have to session also.
Okay. He ought to be here in a minute?
Yep.
You have a good weekend now?
Yeah, cause of course, I didn't have to be anywhere in a long time. You guys have a lot of laundry. I mean, I last week I was in the birthday of the soda, I saw one family, and so. Yeah, I did laundry, I cooked food, I figured I could work on the weekends to cook, cook food for my, you know. So, and with her, it was good, it was nice.
So are you killing your family down for a while?
Well, well, I gotta go back up there in a couple more weeks, so. Well, my uh brother and sister-in-law just had another baby. So they've got four little boys, so I got to meet the little one, so that was worth the trip.
Yep, there you go.
Yeah, so. They're just handful, but they're cute.
Some congressional. Any idea what he might call this thing? From patrol investigations.
Hey Kurt.
Hey Kurt.
How you doing?
Good. Keep it short, sir. Just got some contracts I want to get through for pest control for next year.
Oh, yes.
That's right, I mean, really has need to open my mouth, but I just figured. Bring it in since it is a contract. It's okay, it's probably cheaper than jam, huh? Well, and to do, to do the same too. If it was over, then I'll entertain a motion for approval for, I mean, you're well within your. Right, yeah. I just sent some contract thing, just giving guys courtesy of moving it over in case. In case anyone gets a little. I know, how, did you remember the last time we did this? Even though I did as well with him.
So there is going to be a seventy-five dollar a month for every day break out.
Right. Basically said there was gonna be money to water to fall out, I was like, I'm just gonna do it all. Said I'm not, whether you need it or not, I'm gonna put it in for that.
Right.
Perfect, and I'm comfortable with that, brush he said, and uh.
So do we need a motion, not to say?
Yeah, there's a motion to.
Uh, we'll motion that we enter into contract, we're having exterminators, report to Kansas, land it all here.
Twenty twenty-five season.
Twenty twenty-five season, pest control, uh, that man, those four facilities.
Second. To the boob, second, okay, stand.
Hi.
Kurt, you. Breaking the house. Um, I am uh.
What's your?
Looking into uh getting. The building added onto our camp spot right now, and we are, we're pretty well done. Um, I'm still on doing these paperwork side of things, uh. I'm hoping to have some pricing set up and to bring in for you guys next week. I'm trying to iron out the details of that, I think pretty well where I feel comfortable, and I think it's kind of, you know, competitive. Uh, but at the same time, uh, you know. Right, not give it away. Exactly, um, I think we have a very unique, we'll have a very unique uh experience out there that can't really compare us to anything. But the idea is just sells itself.
Right.
You can have some challenges.
I'd have, I bet I've had twenty-five, thirty-four calls already. Yeah, so I'm. Well, that's funny, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, yeah.
So, I think it's good.
Um, question, that building, will we add that to our insurance?
Yes.
I figured you probably had, but I just was thinking, that's complete, it's probably turned over to the builder's insurance to ours, and so.
Didn't have that. Um, so yeah, we got uh. I think what I'm gonna try and do something a little different, I think I might attack this as a uh, kinda like hotels and like Airbnbs do. Whereas you pay the price upfront. And uh, there's no deposit or anything that you put down, but we will keep a credit card on file for damages or for uh. That way, trying to.
Yeah.
Um, run people down and, and try to get money back to them, in fear of what car they used, you know, to do that. I think that way, uh, what would you call the, you know, you have those rules of what you do, and I think they should lean for, you know. That way, if someone does damage something, you're gonna say it's two hundred dollar deposit, and you take five hundred for the stuff, I mean. This way, you can track accordingly for what we have, and um, I think once I get that ironed out, and so what I want that to say. I'll try and get it over to uh.
Pop?
Pop?
Mm-hmm.
And so he can put whatever he needs to go on to as far as.
No, no, we'll say on that, whenever you do that, have them in document, documenting, you know, if there's. Uh, like you're in the hall, and you have to go around and take pictures of any damage to the truck or trailer or something like that, so. You know, that way, they can't come back on you and say, when you get it for them, you put that straight on, so I know it's like there. So, you know, think about how to handle that, um, just in case, you know. You hate to think about that much.
Right, but my uh, I, I, I do have, my campus has a phone that the county issues to her, so. I can have her set up a folder and her photos.
Yep.
And then I may hit those on there, and do it kind of like that, easy enough for her, cause she's been doing it a clean in it.
Yeah.
So. I'm gonna contract it out for her, and then that way, you know, we're gonna ask variable, you know, for people when they get done, is then. All we need to do is sweep the tables and chairs away, you know, and spot them in the counter. And we will do all these things afterwards, or something like that.
Alright.
That way, yeah, it's all included in the price.
Uh, let's see, I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for man security, IT. Sorry, Kate. Uh, a little tidbits. And um, let's go five minutes first, starting at one thirteen, with Kurt, commissioners, and Christie.
Second one, we'll move to second to the executive session, off their guy, um.
Do we need change?
I have my bag. So you don't have to. I'll just grab this first, and then I'll grab my giant arms bag of stuff.
It's supposed to be cold.
What's your number again?
Seven eight five, eight five one.
Okay, I'll think, there's your Friday, or.
I'm usually.
Okay, we don't play all games, we can see for. Now, how was he getting tied up?
Yeah, no, it's, it's very nice, it's fine, we got the floors done, we got the. The uh, we gotta put the chair parts together, and it was a chair system. First of the year, we leave it ready to work.
Are you guys gonna be working coming for that?
We hope so.
At some point.
And, and.
The weather's something.
Yeah, probably what we're, what we were doing to that, from the past, like creek drive that. And we'll just show up, and I think Barb would be the one that gets to do that. Or the driver behind us. Well, we'll just wait, see if uh, Jim won that.
Yeah, he's sitting on the edge, yeah.
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
I'm good. Hey, good.
Good, how are you? Okay. We'll uh. We will uh, entertain a motion to executive session. Just uh, yeah.
Um, make a motion to go into executive session, under uh, security, IT, or twelve. Let's see, we'll start off twenty minutes. Getting that one twenty-two. To include commissioners, Christie, Kate, Kim, and if you ever show up, uh. Lisa? Lisa and Mary?
Yeah. Yeah, you might call Lisa, just tell her what's going on, I don't know. Mary, come down, slide away. Alright, spin the move, I'll second it. Um, going to the. Thank you for your patience, we're back in session.
Can't get rid of the setting. I just wanted to talk to you about what I hear.
That's why I thought we knew a little better. Hi Barry, hi Pat.
Hi guys.
I think we're gonna go with.
We'll keep it together, we'll figure that out. I think the two things that would be very helpful is, um, when Haki did whoever. Like we're five-year-olds. Cause a lot of this stuff, unless it makes you sometimes correct, um, just the basics of what we need to know. As opposed to a, a long explanation of, of things, cause I just lost some of it. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks everybody. Go ahead. Um, give us thirty seconds to make some notes here, and then we'll move into our.
Alright.
Martin's having a really busy day.
I'm ready.
We haven't had a, a department head meeting for a while, so thank you for everybody coming to the island.
I just want to pick this today.
It is, it is, I know the sheriffs, the sheriffs in Wichita are, he's sitting after Wichita day. So I'm, he'll be here, Scott's out on the road, he wasn't, he was in this morning, so we kind of touch base with them, he's working on a lot of projects around the county, um. So, must've just raised your hand and started. Pat?
I have nothing going on.
Oh, come on, you do, you gotta have something going on.
Got my trees cleaned up.
Then it looks good. Does everybody know like Pat was cutting trees down on Sunday?
All right.
Yeah, isn't that amazing?
Big time.
Everything in the building's working as good, uh.
Don't be saying that. Magda Royds. Magda Royds is coming up, please, they need to do their annual, or by annual PD.
Yeah, bill for everything.
I know we've got a few issues there, and then. We got a couple lights we're gonna replace Wednesday in the fourth room.
Is almost ninety-nine percent of all the lights in this building been switched to LED lights?
We're getting there.
Okay, what would it be getting there? Outside help, that's what I'm asking. What? Why I think he doesn't, I think he is.
We're getting there, uh, third floor is pretty much done.
Go ahead.
Uh, in the hallway, uh, bathrooms. Um, we may be looking at eight canons there, they're about a piece. Um, I've got the fourth room switched out. And I think the second floor is all switched out, so there ain't many of these wood basters.
Yeah.
Looking at getting that, it's a new ceiling that I'll put in.
And how long ago was it you put all the acoustics in the other room over here, and that's all?
That's it, done.
Been several months ago, August?
Yeah, it was about August.
And we didn't have to save it?
They had to take it in there.
They never, it seems to.
Very good.
And I took the old ones out, put them in the drawer, and that made one of them.
Good, can we repurpose those?
Yeah. And Kurt's about to come in, and when they install some lights, the corporate.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. We have two different department heads working together.
Exactly.
And go, that's incredible, cool, I like it. No, I meant, I guess Kurt's doing something outside his mill, I wasn't here, you guys. I just didn't come out, I didn't.
I was sitting there, they sitting there.
Meaning Kurt used to do a lot of electrical work, that's not what he does now.
He's getting the big ladder I need to work it out, so.
Cool, everybody works well. Booing. What's new in your world?
Not much, I'm working with Pat, trying to get some uh, new security upgrades in upstairs, that's best.
You're fully staffed?
Yeah, build turn around, left, and came right back.
I, I read that. Uh, just missed you?
We called Boomer right now. Yeah. He decided, he, he decided his uh, second profession there was not what he wanted to do after one week in. Bank, or he got the heck of a life, so he's me trainings or yeah.
Yeah.
He gets around a lot.
Cool.
I've been making hours and hours of trying for a new light back system, which is the alive system now, and I've had so many problems with it, with the kings. For this day, so I'm gonna come with them daily, and people have to wait a few months to get the right feedback, just for all of your things. Working with everybody, I think I have all of my delegation resolutions scanned, that I'm gonna send off to do that with the king, so we'll get there, and then just work on some of the things.
Any feedback from environments or uh, have you deployed any add-on on the new radios, did they talk to you about that, or anything?
They don't seem to have a problem, I mean, there is still some those spots that they don't work out, but that's gonna be the.
Hopefully, that'll all go away with the active system flights.
I think it will.
Up on the new tower, or the lease on the existing tower.
So hopefully they're happy with the radios, some of them are wanting commissioners to buy them more, and I said, that's not gonna happen, but it's.
Thank you, thank you for covering our back. Yeah, that's for sure, yeah. Mary?
Um. Then obviously started scanning, uh, some of our old school records, so we can kind of try to get those digitized before they go to the storage area, um. It's a slow, steady process, it's, it's, it's going.
Okay.
And that's it. I think we have everything out of storage, now we successfully merged all of our, uh, profiles into our office.
Successfully merged.
Kate and I work together because I gave her. Kate and I worked together because I gave her some files.
She did, she gave you part of it.
Sounds a deal, buddy.
Yes.
Well, that's great, I'm glad somebody's working together.
Yeah, thank you, Chrissy.
How, how full is our uh, storage room when we leave?
It's getting there, I mean, we took some time off for the elections, and then I wanna get all the Christmas stuff up, then out of my ways, we start all the board down, cause Christmas is going down there afterwards.
Good, yeah, that's a good idea, just to move it down.
So we've got those out of the way, so it's getting empty in that room.
Which one?
Sunlight room.
Which is the farthest.
Right.
And then the one back up here, it has.
That's her fault.
Is that getting, is that gonna help you too, to benefit you to be able to take some stuff down there, some of those records that are in there for a hundred years?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just didn't get to any of that stuff.
Would it benefit, I mean, is it, is it a, um, manpower thing where we could hire a couple football players, and they could come up and help fetch and tow, or is it, what, is that part of it?
No.
No, okay.
Uh.
I think it's more of a benefit.
Yeah, I mean, I got with Mary, she had a few boxes she don't need, so I wanna haul them down, edit them down, um, I got a bunch of my stuff that I don't hardly use, we've got it moved down, um, huh? I don't move them much, you know, you're, doesn't all my display is. That's what is, I put all that stuff in there, that wouldn't be.
Now you started to point this, we have something to say when you point it here, or?
To me, how do I get something to say? No.
Alright.
Okay, Lisa? I mean, how long have you been with the reins?
Fifteen days.
Still learning, yeah, I'll just take some time, um, we got pulled down, we hired a new gal, and she started on fourth, so, um.
I mean, her.
Not everybody moved in their right spots now.
That's important. Yeah.
So, yeah.
Christie? Mm-hmm, new exciting in your office?
I need to certify election this week.
Okay.
Got Sarah back.
Yeah.
It was great, it was really good.
Little motion's good.
Yeah, I thought, I thought the certification went really well, I, I liked kind of the way we did it this year, they had everything organized, so that was pretty, pretty good.
Got the abstracts in, the materials are in.
Okay.
And the taxes are kind of in the past period.
Okay. Um, one of the things I wanted to run past is, we were, we were talking about, so typically, the county does it for each employee every year prior to Christmas, um, I'd like to get the street back. If you have that, I mean, if you want to give that, you don't have to do it today, if you wanna email Christie with it, um, what your thoughts are, we've done chambers box, we've done Visa card, uh, you know, whatever.
Personally, I'm okay that we do the county picnic.
And that's a great point, do we need to do anything, we had that conversation, we had the picnic, um.
You added the uh.
Budget is tight.
You added Christmas Eve on to the, so.
Are you guys comfortable with just, we wish everybody a Merry Christmas?
I see the wrong stuff, I like it a lot.
Speaking of picnic, you, does everybody enjoy it, I think, and who's taking on the reins next year?
There is ours.
I'm a picnic.
All in favor, say aye. We gotta talk about that, um, I know.
Just let us know if it's.
I know the clerk's office has done it last three years, two years.
I think probably than, you know, take this week and think about it, talk amongst yourselves, uh, I think nobody, probably next Monday, because if we do do something, it's gonna take a little while to get together, so, you know.
But yeah, if we're comfortable with just not doing anything at all this year for Christmas. I think we'd be good with that. And then the whole employee picnic, if a couple of departments wanna get together and work on putting that together, um, they could do that too, so, you have a bigger office, more employees, easy, I mean, so, you have many people who could help coordinate and put ideas in, but, I mean, we wouldn't wanna put it on the pack.
There's a dollar, so maybe you can get another department to work together.
Great idea.
We're not gonna let that go.
Uh, but maybe a couple of departments, you know, two of the smaller departments work together to coordinate it, and organize it, and do it for a couple of years, and then we'll pass the torch, I'm waiting for the year that Pat and Jerry do it.
We're gonna do it every year, cause we're on the chairman, right? We're not doing pretty sharp, but we'll back.
We appreciate it, um, what else?
Something I hadn't remembered that we were gonna talk about specifically was the Christmas, uh. And I, I'll bring it up in, cause it seems like you do it every time we have the need, uh, keep working on your success plans, I know we probably haven't worked too long, cause I know we haven't, we need to start doing that too.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a little different for us, for a succession plan, it'd be for Lisa or Christie, any of you, I mean, there are some things that you're gonna wanna write down, as commissioner, new commissioner coming in, they're gonna have a learning curve, but it's, it's, it's a little bit. But yeah, if you, if you're working on those, if one of you guys were to buy a beer truck, somebody would be able to pick up a, uh, notepad and, you know, or a binder and kinda file through some important dates, there are things that have to be done, especially in you guys as departments, that's really important.
This one.
That one's attacking me.
Um, like your standards. Do not make any change within service this year.
I can't think of anything, you guys have anything for us, it's off the cuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's getting my opinion, have Christmas decorations up at Thanksgiving.
I'm not, yesterday all the weather was nice, so.
I would agree with you, you gotta wait till at least Thanksgiving Day.
Gotta do that.
But I usually don't mind up when it's either raining or snowing, so.
Oh, I know what I was gonna ask you guys, so, like we had lunch with commissioners, is anybody interested in doing that again? Do you guys like to do that, or is it just sit in here and eat, and go, nobody talks, and go back to your office? Wait, do you, really, I mean, if you enjoy it, we'll continue to do it, if, if the employees really think it's gotta, we won't do it again. Come on, surely somebody's giving feedback. What do your employees say, Pat?
No, it's pretty tough.
But, yeah, I'd, I'd like to speak on that, if, if we're gonna do that again, we enjoyed it, cause I think it's an opportunity to get to know you on a personal level versus a work level, particularly, I think, when we come in, I'd rather have a conversation that direction than other, but it doesn't have to be, we don't have to do it, it makes people happy. Well, now across the street at the sandwich shop, they have a whole nother board of sandwiches, and they are good.
Yeah.
So. Yes, if, if, if we don't hear anything back, other than what we've heard today, we'll go ahead and start planning that out, do something again.
Yep.
What is that?
Thanks for coming, appreciate it.
Glad you all are working together. See ya.
See you later, everybody.
Yes.
That letter?
Yes.
You still got it, you like it?
Is that the letter in your hand?
Uh, on the feet.
I, I went upstairs, and I, you handed it to me, and I put it in my pocket. I went to lunch, and I left it on the seat, I have not read it, so, we can make a copy of it.
Want to read it to you?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, so this is regarding property filing penalty changes, you're so-and-so, find this letter as notification that filing requirements for personal property as described in KSA seven nine three zero six have changed as of twenty twenty two. Previously, all Kansas taxpayers were required to only list, sign, and submit a personal property rendition to the county accreters office no later than March fifteenth, of all tangible personal properties subject to taxing located in that county's taxing districts as of January first. The twenty twenty four Kansas legislator, legislature passed Senate Bill four ten, which events KSA seven nine three zero six, removes the annual reporting requirement for taxpayers with an app rendition on file and no changes required. And then it gives the statute, what that statute says, and it says, county accreters office will not mail rendition to you for the twenty twenty five tax year, will mail these letters out to everybody that has a personal property now. If you make changes to the personal property that you own, please call or come into our office, um, and attempt a manner to notify us of the changes. Um, and we also put in there that we may require proof of transaction will fail. If there are any changes to report, the taxpayer is required to file a rendition for that tax year to avoid penalties, examples of changes that should be reported, purchase of new personal property, sale of personal property, and changes to the address for use of personal property. It says, please contact our office, we'll be in question terms at our front number, and then, so, there's your one-time letter that we send out every year.
Will I get rendition like the five minutes of penalty per time?
No, then we'll just get the penalty, which is, has been reduced, that was a part of it, um, it's been reduced the penalty percentages, um, the, it's filed, it used to be fifty, and it's been to, there's a half percentage in there somewhere. See, there's well, so, augment them, AS four hundred, doesn't have a solution for that yet, cause they don't do, uh, twenty-four percentage, they just do four percentage, um, so we have to work through that somehow. Um, what we will do, so if someone makes changes, we will print off the rendition that we have on file, they can make their changes, sign it, and they get, if they have changes to be made, uh, instead of us mailing out, we can mail it if they need us to mail one, but we, they are not required to annually file. So, we will be sending out personal property renditions, green sheets or yellow sheets each year, so that will save a little on, uh, postage.
Yeah.
But this year we'll send out the letter, letting them know of those changes, and if you all are good with that letter, then.
It's out.
Somehow.
Yep.
The twenty-second.
I asked for the meeting on Friday. We all plan to, we all move sometimes.
What, what time is it being?
You know, I haven't seen the agenda, apparently we're done by like one. Doesn't really usually end by three or three forty.
I'm, I'm gonna dry myself.
I think I'll probably, I'll dry myself too, so if I'm gonna need to stop, we do it next.
I think they put that with me.
That's all I have.
Alright, thanks, Kings.
Oh, yeah, Tim about this, the billing coming through in and not directly to the count.
I think we, we just need to contact, uh, IP pathways and just come, this is the state, it needs to come, and I, I would, we'd make it, uh, not a person, but make it, uh, county clerk's office, or Johnson County Commission, or something like that.
Not, I don't want to come to the commission, I.
Go to the clerk's office, that's, that's great, cause it shouldn't come to anyone, any one person, I don't believe.
I don't have anything else.
I can't think of anything.
Do you have anything, uh, you want to take out?
So moved.
We moved the second with.
The jar.
Aye.